So, following the board's order.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
That's a good sound.
I'd like to remind you that this is an open public meeting of the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners, that it's being aired for the public view, as well as a record is being kept. One of the things that we like to do at a board meeting is pause at the start for a positive opening with awards and recognition. Today is an extraordinarily special recognition, as you're well aware. While COVID is no longer over, and will continue for some time forward, we have been able to open the county, and this seemed an appropriate opportunity to pause and remember some of the heroes that performed during COVID. This is a particularly special presentation, because as some of you may be aware, several years ago, an Honor Task Force was created in the city of Pendleton, which from time to time honors outstanding individuals or groups. And they have done that for, I don't know, three years perhaps. So, they contacted me and asked if they could be present at the board meeting to make a very special presentation. So Susan Bauer, are you going to do it? I think Gwen Feld from that group is also here, although she's very social, and I think she's still at security visiting. But she may materialize.
Yes, good morning. Excuse me. Good morning, everyone. I am very excited to be here today. As Commissioner Murdock said, there is a group of people that honor groups and people who are selfless, and giving, and serving, and compassionate in their community. And they've asked me to be here today to present a very special award. So today, on behalf of the Pendleton Task Force, I'm honored to present an award to a Yumitilla County team that has done an absolutely outstanding job over the past year and a half. This group of people have selfishly dedicated themselves to communicating, being available, staying current, and taking the leadership role during this time of crisis. This group of people have worked as a team, staying true to their mission of being dedicated to promoting, protecting, and preserving the health of our community. At this time, I would like to invite anyone and everyone here from the Yumitilla County Health Department. And I'd like to ask everyone else to stand and help me honor this team's air for our community. Always, Yumitilla County Health does great work. In particular, during this time of community crisis, it's been noticed, recognized, and appreciated. So come on up.
After Susan makes this presentation, I think for our benefit, we would appreciate it if each of you would introduce yourselves, so that we know who you are.
You're fantastic.
And what you do.
Scrunching for a great picture. I don't know about this doesn't make it great.
Wonderful. I'll read the award to you all now.
Joe, you're not in the picture.
As well as those who are back at the office in the department, not able to be here today. So the Pendleton Honor Task Force honors the Yumco Health Team for their dedication, commitment, and exemplary service throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. The team did an amazing job serving Yumitilla County and all citizens during this crisis, and each and every employee, each and every one of you, is being recognized for their part on this notable team. The impact made by the team will be remembered by our community forever. Thank you. Can we get all of you in front of the board? Yes. Yes. Can I get one where it looks? Wait, babe.
Before you introduce yourselves, I want to tell you one quick story. Last night, my wife and I were actually having a celebration at Max, and a lady came up to me. I did not know who she was. She was in tears. And she said, "I didn't know whether to approach you or not, but I just wanted you to know how much we appreciate what Yumitilla County has done during COVID." So it was a pretty emotional moment, so. Anyway, this thing, you need to know, so many anonymous people out there so much appreciate what you've done, so. All right, we'll start with you, John.
I'm Dr. John Hitzman. I'm a public health officer for Yumitilla County.
I'm Kate Nefrenella. I worked as a contact tracer and now work in environmental health.
Bridgette Brandtigan, contact tracer.
Janine Anderson. I was a contact tracer and now I'm community health assistant.
Hannah Heybig, and I'm a contact tracer.
Nicole Byram, and a public health nurse.
Corey Hibbard, public health nurse and nurse family partnership home visiting nurse.
Alicia Lundgren, deputy director.
Lisa Lindo, office manager.
Travis Ford, office assistant.
Joe Fumaro, public health director.
Gloria Corona, accounting and interpreting.
Laura Ruiz, communal disease manager.
Carrie Tours, community health supervisor.
I'm Kelsey Reyes, and I'm a public health nurse.
Thank you. Thank you for coming over. Thank you for taking the time. Thank you for your contributions. And please share this moment with your colleagues who weren't able to be here.
Thank you.
Kind of hoping you're gonna leave that Dutch Bros cup right there.
Congratulations, and very well deserved.
Commissioner Dorn.
I'd like to take a moment, again, being on the job for seven months, I'd like to take a moment to thank Tom Fellows, Sheriff Rowan, and Jim Littlefield. We've had several meetings in the evenings over the last three to four weeks. Some of them have been emotional, but every one of them have been taken seriously by these folks, and they have strived to find solutions to problems that have been out there. Everything from road issues to safety issues and traffic issues. I would just like to thank them. They've shown up at 7:00 for meetings in a park, and had long discussions with very emotional and passionate landowners, and done just an extremely professional job. So I know that it's just part of their job, but it isn't part of their job to take on what we've gone through for the last few weeks. And I just want to reach out and publicly thank Tom, and Jim, and Sheriff Rowan. They've just done an incredible job. They are very dedicated public servants, and I don't think people understand how much not just them, but all of the county employees reach out and are dedicated to our constituents. And I've been more than pleasantly surprised in my seven months and how much support they have as we work with the people in the field. And with the COVID restrictions lifting, there are many groups that want face-to-face meetings, and not once has somebody said no. So to all of the Yumitilla County employees, but especially for the last few weeks, Tom, Jim Littlefield, and Sheriff Rowan, I'd like to say thank you.
In addition, we do have any number of thank you notes, which I will not read, although I think each of the commissioners have taken the time to read them. These are a result of our support at the Milton Freewater Junior Livestock Show. There are also three letters in here from the Fair Princesses for our support of the Fair Princesses. And I think, Melinda, if I'm not correct, that is all thank you notes we have. But they're certainly available in the commissioner's office for anybody who wants to come read them. I can assure you, they'll bring a smile to their face. Children that age write interesting things, so we've really enjoyed them. Okay.
So, not to be outdone, I didn't want to be the only one not to have an award presentation. So we implemented a challenge coin system here at the county recently, and I wish I would have brought one with me. That would have been the smart thing to do, but unfortunately I did not. So I'll stay away from any drinking establishments while I don't have one. So the challenge coin comes from many things. It started back in the military, and if you get caught doing something extraordinary, you get a challenge coin. It's kind of like the challenge. What have you done that's gone above and beyond what you do? And Yumitilla County, we have a motto, and to me, it's more than just a motto. The motto is, "Our employees are our greatest asset," and I truly believe that. And this just goes to show exactly why that is. For instance, this one's for Cliff Pease. He's one of our security deputies. On June 24th, 2021, Cliff Pease will be traveling to Willau County to instruct a tracking class on behalf of Yumitilla County's search and rescue. Cliff is not a member of search and rescue, but he's going above and beyond to represent the sheriff's office. He is providing this training free of charge. Although Cliff is only a part-time employee, he brings a vast wealth and knowledge and experience that he is always willing to and eager to share with anyone willing to listen. So Deputy Pease received a challenge coin from Captain Hearn. Another challenge coin that came out was from Mitch Hernandez to Matthew Burns in Assessment and Taxation. Matthew Burns has been a tremendous addition to our team. I can say with confidence that our team would not be where they are today without his help. In Matthew's short time working for the county, he has taken on the task of helping train new teammates, even though he is still new to his position. Matthew has gone above and beyond his normal duties to help others succeed. I greatly appreciate all he does. And last, but certainly not least, again, from Captain Hearn, this one goes to Israel Agasso at Stafford Hansel. On Monday, July 12th, 2021, the technician for the X-ray machine arrived and set it up. There's quite a bit of wooden wrapping that came off the X-ray machine. Israel took it upon himself to make sure the mess from the X-ray machine was picked up. Israel brought hand carts to help move the X-ray machine, and recruited other employees to help move the X-ray machine. This mess was not his to pick up, however, he jumped right into help. I am very thankful for Israel's help. Israel is our go-to person for the Stafford Hansel building. He goes above and beyond every single day. There is never a time he won't lend a hand for anyone in this building. Israel is a great asset for this county. I tell him thank you for his help at least once a day, but I'd really like to show him how much he is appreciated. So he also received a challenge coin. So again, you can see why our employees are our greatest asset. So the challenge coins, for anybody who doesn't know, they were given to managers and above, so managers and directors, sergeants and above. And that way, if they catch anybody going above and beyond, they get awarded a challenge coin. So that's kind of what this program is. Thank you.
If I can add to that, I took five coins with me to the National Association of Counties Conference in Washington, DC, actually in National Harbor, and presented five. One to the newly-elected president of the National Association of Counties, who now has one. One to the newly-elected second vice president of counties, who also has one. One to Bill Truax, the chairman of the Immigration Reform Task Force. One to Aaron Hurley, the administrator of the Immigration Reform Task Force. And one to a commissioner from Altorres County, California, from Altorres, California, I think it's MoDOT County, who has helped leading the charge in dealing with the water shortage in the Klamath Basin. I will say that when I presented it to Bill Truax, who is from Florida, a contractor and a commissioner, he was moved beyond what I had anticipated. And four other times during the conference, he cornered me, and he said, "You do realize I collect challenge coins?" And he said, "I had no idea I'd ever have one from Oregon." So they do make an impact.
Certainly do.
So, are there any additions to the agenda?
There will be one additional payable.
Approval of minutes.
Oh, sorry. All right, we have minutes from the meeting, July 7th and June 30th.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes.
Out of second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Public input from anyone about items not on our agenda. Man, you ought to come up to the front.
I'm ready for public speaking. That is a pop o' one. I asked on July 7th that the next meeting of the board needs to address it in their agenda to enforce support and honorable county judge's decision to hold accountable all county, city, state, and federal contractors who are directly responsible for violation of international crimes against humanity, as well as county, city, state, and federal codes of law in the United States since 1776. If I may, part of the problem, gentlemen, is malpractice. He was two years old. I had to bury him. My girlfriend, my high school girlfriend's son. And right now, there's a contractor that is functioning under the guise of a pill mill. It has a lot to do with patient care ratio, and I wasn't able to work Dan Esslinger into this meeting, because he has patients that he has to take care of. But I was hoping that you guys would seriously consider backing up, dropping a contract for Lifeways. It's just a start. Another concept is the blind signs. That's a federal contract. And when you work with concrete, you should be able to lay a 90-degree angle. And the design for blind signs is supposed to be at 90-degree angles across the streets, and they're putting them at 45-degree angles. And just imagine, you can't see, and these bubbles are directing you into traffic. Unfortunately, the Metro Blind Signs died because of a faulty contract in Seattle from the design that was created. So is it possible that the Board of Commissioners could start with upholding the judge's orders and possibly drop contractors who cannot fulfill their contract, possibly even charge them the cost of the damage that they do?
Do know that-
From concrete to healthcare.
Do know that following your presentation, I visited with our legal counsel, and he's guiding us with regard to those issues over which we have jurisdiction. We have to be very cautious to make sure that we have jurisdiction over any of those, any issues. But we're fully conscious of what you've asked of us.
I really appreciate that.
I believe you mentioned Lifeways, right?
Yeah, could you repeat the piece about Lifeways?
To the best of my knowledge, a lot of the practitioners are copy and paste university Phoenix degree or degree. Medical nursing degrees online, you do not qualify. And it could set precedent for the whole state of Oregon to say, if you can't go to a university, put in the time, get certification, you shouldn't be practicing medicine, mental health, et cetera, because it just perpetuates the problem. I've been able to, well, know my county, to go after the pharmaceutical manufacturers and the sales representatives for about $7.2 million that each of the 36 counties in the state of Oregon has received $200,000 to curb the drug addiction problem, as well as the heroin epidemic in the state.
But did you ask us to drop Lifeways? Is that what I heard?
That's what I'm asking. And I don't want to just, because there's still care needed. My suggestion would be Kaiser Permanente, mental health and addiction medicine, because there's-
Let me stop real quick. I can answer your question there. So we went out for RFP, Request for Proposals, for a new provider for mental health and behavioral health. Lifeways was one of the applicants. We chose a different applicant.
Oh, wonderful.
Community Crisis Community Counseling. Community Counseling Solutions.
Depending on the main prescriber, practitioner, and diagnoser, and looking at the patient care ratio, you might have to hire extra doctors, because one doctor can't take on the entire county.
And our new provider will be looking at all that.
Wonderful. I really appreciate that. Thank you, Tex. I really appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, our first issue, we are continuing to spotlight public health. Is Joe going to make that presentation?
Good morning. I'm Joe Fumaro, public health director. So this is a request to spend $25,440 for billboards across the county. These are billboards that we currently have messaging on right now, and this would be to extend our contract for an additional 12 months beginning in October. This is all paid for out of funding we've received for COVID education and vaccination promotion funds, and right now, COVID vaccination messaging is what is on those billboards currently.
Mr. Chair, have approval.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
I do have a quick comment. Joe, I like the billboards. I think they're very effective. Are they going to move these four to different spots for the next 12 months, or?
So these four are four specific ones that we have.
So it's just an extension of the ones that are out there?
It's just a continuation of four that we have in place with these folks, yes.
Okay, thank you.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
I certainly would be happy when COVID is in our rearview mirror, but I will say, if there's one positive upside, it has been a new spotlight on public health. It's been an afterthought by the state of Oregon. Now I don't think it will ever be again, and so.
I sincerely hope not.
Certainly, public health has been very much in the forefront, and it's nice we could honor your staff, so thank you, Joe. Okay. Oh, you have another.
Yeah, I think the next one's mine, too. So this is asking for the creation of seven contact tracer positions with my department. This would replace the temporary contact tracer positions that we have been utilizing since May of 2020, where we hoped and thought this was going to be a three- to six-month process. We are giving preferential for hiring of these positions to the existing temporary tracers that we have, and it's actually our sincere hope that we keep everybody that we've got currently working for us to continue moving forward. We received funding from the Public Health Authority, which has passed through from the federal dollars that were passed, that can give us funding for the next couple of years to support this type of work, and that's where this funding is coming from.
Mr. Chair, have you have approval to create seven FTE for contact tracers?
Is there a second?
Second question, is this, the time period on this, is that matching the federal? So the time period will start in September, or?
So the time period for this fund that we received actually started January of this year, the way that was set for.
So it's a '21 and '22?
And can technically go longer than that for these specific positions? The way I have the funding budgeted out, we expect them to be fully funded until at least December of 2022.
Thank you.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, dispatch payable?
This is coming before the board because of the dollar amount. This is an annual amount that Dispatch had a request for approval on. It is for the continuation of the Sunridge Systems, we bring software for the Dispatch CAT system. And the amount requested for approval is $10,797 to Sunridge Systems.
I would move for approval for the expenditure for the Sunridge System in the amount of $10,797.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Dan, I'm sure you signed the second page, too. All right, the next item is local community grants and payables. We have two, I believe, on the adocket today. One is to the city of Adams for their healthy safety project in the amount of $35,000. The second is to the city of Echo in support of the Mid-Yumitilla County River Flood Coalition, the amount of $75,000 for flood control.
Go ahead.
I would move for approval, as these are going to help these communities in most incredible ways.
I agree.
Okay, I would point out that, Dan, you've been working with the Mid-Yumitilla County River Coalition, I know they're, I don't know if desperate is appropriate, but probably, because they could easily have lost the community in the last major flood. Fortunately, I guess fortunately, the road washed away, the freeway washed away, and released that water, but ODOT has spent considerable money replacing that, and so they no longer have that protection, so. Is that a fair analysis?
That is a very quick recap. It's accurate, but I would use a term stronger than desperate. There are property owners losing ground right now without the engineering to support the permits. It's, they cannot even touch their ground, so. This is critical to not just one or two people, but to complete, I think it's a total of 61 reaches on the Mid-Yumitilla River. It is, if I'm right, I think it's 130, or excuse me, 61 reaches and 131 landowners that this will assist. It's a very broad assist, for sure. So thank you.
And it will also, as I understand, it produce their lagoons for their wastewater program.
Yep, they have to have the engineering and the permits first, and we are the pivot for that right now.
I'm sorry for interrupting, gentlemen. If you're talking about wastewater, Padaroque has a amazing crew that are re-forging all the super mines. I think they're out of Washington. I heard the Padaroque City Department, they actually have photographs.
Amanda, you're going to have to approach in order for us to be aware.
There are some really amazing contractors after the flood in Padaroque in 2020 that have been renovating all of the super mines in Padaroque. They've done a amazing job. I've heard praise from the City Department of cleaning up Padaroque, like the whole city is thrilled with them. They're getting the water lines in, and they've done an amazing job that a lot of people haven't been able to do. So I would contact Padaroque City. What would you call them? Maintenance? And the person who runs the city maintenance might be able to give you their information for the contractors that are replacing the lines. I think they're out of Washington State. They have done an amazing job.
Okay, Commissioner Dorn?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or Mayor Carnes, also.
Thank you. All right, are we ready for a motion? Are we ready for a vote?
We're ready for a vote.
Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next is the maintenance payable, two maintenance payables, Mark.
Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager, Yumitilla County.
I'd move for-
Dynamic presentation.
I'd move for approval of the $7,400. I'd move for approval of the payable to John's Custom Flooring in the amount of $7,400.
Second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
The second is for the chiller.
So this is the chiller work at Stafford Hansel. It was replacing several parts that were failing. Obviously, it was very needed the last few weeks.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, have you have approval for the chiller replacement?
I second that, and it's nice not to be in an office that's 112 degrees, and Israel's area was cooler, it was only 109, so, but.
I agree.
Those were some tough days in there.
And Israel probably didn't even complain.
Never does. Never does.
He just asked if I needed him to do anything else. He just asked if he needed anything else.
Yeah.
Well, we have amazing contradictions, because I've been wearing a coat. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Get you a heater, maybe.
Gate permit?
Are you still with us for gate permit?
No.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I don't think-
I saw you still standing there.
Oh, here it is. Yes, slow down.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Phillips, County Public Works Director. Cynthia Van Winkle has requested permission to put a lock gate on Anderson Road. Anderson Road lies at the top of Heim Creek. This is a road that we have not maintained, done any maintenance on for years. It's primarily two-wheel tracks going out through the field. They've indicated that they're concerned about not only vandalism, but trespassers and activities going on up there, that they're really not, they would really like to steer clear of. They have, Cynthia has secured the signatures of all the property owners and even a number of the folks that are leasing from those property owners up there. It's the road department's position that we would recommend allowing Ms. Van Winkle to put the lock gate up this time.
I have to recuse myself on this one.
Okay, well, in that case, Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mrs. Something or Other, what is it now?
Beck.
Beck, well, welcome. Congratulations.
Kim Beck, Yumitilla County Development and Disabilities Program. I'm for you to ask for approval of payment to round up city plumbing in the amount of This actually is a reimbursement for environmental hospitalization from one of the individuals we served that were able to get their back from Oregon. And we already have the money back from the state. I actually did a deposit yesterday.
Well, Mr. Chair, have approval.
I'd second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going into hearing mode. We have before us the emergency operations plan. Are you going to lead this, Counsel, or?
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts is here.
All right, Tom Roberts, Director of Emergency Operations.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Roberts, the County Bricks Manager of the Yumitilla County Sheriff's Office. And what we're putting in front of you today is the request for approval of the recent review that was conducted of the emergency operations plan for the county. As FEMA requires that the plan be comprehensively looked at every five years in the state of Oregon, requires that we review it for any minor changes every two. This would complete that review, allow you to adopt the plan. Apparently, we're going through the process of the more comprehensive review to meet the federal standards of it for. I've provided each of you with access to the topic of the plan for review. It's about a thousand pages long. I hope that you had the opportunity to read the whole thing. No? Yes, maybe so. Anyway, but essentially, that's what we're asking today, is for adoption of this plan as has been put forward for review.
Interesting. You had a rather comprehensive list of potential scenarios, almost all of which we've experienced in the last several years.
I try not to take credit for that.
Comments?
Public hearing, aren't we?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. But you can comment during public hearings.
That's true. I'd like to thank Tom. It's been kind of a long process. We've worked together on this, on this review. I've learned a lot about emergency response, for sure. So I'm glad we're getting this done and moving on to the next step as we kind of focus on this, because emergency management is critical to the county. I think I've stressed that a lot, and not just to the county, but to the Commissioners as a whole. And it is a number-one priority to get this done, because it's information that gives us direction during an emergency or declaration. And it was well overdue to be updated, and so I'm glad that we've got this far. And I thank Tom, and now we move on to the next phases and get that done. But being compliant is a huge issue, especially on my discussions with FEMA on a whole lot of different things. That's, thank you. I've become well-educated, that's for sure. I mean, not well-educated, I've learned a lot.
We are in hearing mode. Any other comments from the public, pro or con, relative to-
I wanted to give a thumbs up to Union Pacific for addressing the railroad issues. They've been able to, within their engineers and just their employees-
I can't hear.
I can't hear.
Amanda, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can we, can you come up front, please?
All right. I don't know if you guys remember a few years back when the railroad line almost washed the little tobacco store and potential houses over, between, well, where Albertson's used to be. But I've been noticing that some of the engineers were speeding over 65, and they've done an amazing job of bringing their speed down to 35 miles an hour between Reeves and Caillis, which puts the mill in a safer place. Reeves Mill, it's a mill, the Flower Mill here in Pendleton, and the Caillis Mill. And they've also been able, Union Pacific deserves one of those button coins, because they've been able to address the problem with the train lines. A quick response, from about February to now July, they're working on the lines. So to ask, if I could recommend giving them a coin, that would be number four. Thank you.
Just a comment, Amanda, I'll be with you, Union Pacific Railroad, on Friday.
Really?
Meeting with them in Portland, so I'll pass that on.
Wonderful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments? We'll go out of hearing mode. Is this a first reading or a second? Is this an action item today?
It's an emergency one. You just do it all in one session.
Okay, perfect. Do we have a motion?
I would move for approval of ordinance number 2021-06.
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have one additional item, which is a payable, which was added to the agenda. Counsel?
This is just an additional payable due to the amount that's required for approval, and it's for premium payable to city, county insurance services.
Mr. Chair, have approval.
Second.
That isn't C I F.
Yeah.
What?
C I F.
Do you want to vote?
Oh, okay.
Is there a problem?
Would, should I recuse myself being on their board?
They never have in the past, but-
What?
You said they never have in the past.
All right, all right. We've noted for the minutes, we're a member of their board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, making the comments?
The only one I would like to make is, one of my colleagues has got a birthday letter this week, and I'd like to wish him a happy birthday.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's Saturday. We don't buy candles anymore, particularly during a drought and fire season.
Tom, thanks you.
So, any other comments from the Commissioners?
Just remind everybody that we're rolling really fast into fair time, the Yumitilla County Fair. So there's everything from the parade and the preparation for the fair itself. So thanks for everybody that's involved with that, and obviously, we invite everybody. Thank you.